I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Health to order this morning for Tuesday, November 3, 2015. And the first item of business is adjustments to the agenda for the Board of Health meeting. Any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, then we'll move on to public comment for the Board of Health. And I see no one has signed up for public comment. And I don't see anyone other than staff out in the audience. You guys get to talk next. Is there any response to public comment or remonstrance from the Board? Then we'll move on to item 4A, which is a report on the semi-annual Board of Health Report. And it looks like we've got Karen, Karen Gaffney and crew. So I'll let Karen do the introductions and take it away from here. So, all yours Karen.
Thank you. Good morning Chair Bozovic and Commissioners. Today is our semi-annual Board of Health, our regular Board of Health meeting with you. And I feel like we've met a lot as the Board of Health this year. So today, our Board of Health report is not focused on the Community Health Improvement Plan because you had that specific work session on the chip most recently. So instead, we are highlighting a few core public health programs that we have. And then, of course, also provided the general update to you and happy to answer questions about anything that's in the report. But the presentation today is going to focus on three particular parts of public health. To my left, I have Chelsea Whitney, who supervises our maternal-child health program. And she's going to talk about some of the key programs that we provide in public health for pregnant women and young children. And then Connie Sullivan, who supervises our WIC program, is going to talk to you about some of the work that's happening in WIC. And then finally, batting cleanup is Dr. Ledke, who is going to talk about communicable disease and the work that's going on in the program right now and actually some risks that are present as we think about in the public health world, communicable disease is kind of the heart attack of public health. And so that's what we drop everything for when those outbreaks happen. So Pat will talk with you about that. And before I turn it over to Chelsea, I did, I would be remiss not to mention to the Board of Health that yesterday, we did open our newest clinic as part of the Community Health Centers. The Delta Oaks Clinic started seeing patients yesterday afternoon. And it's really a beautiful facility. I know you've all been invited to the grand opening on the 16th. So I hope we'll see you there if you wanted to come out and take a look before that. I'm happy to arrange that for you. And our next agenda item, I know we'll have Terry Copeland here. And Trillium was certainly a key partner for us in that effort. So on that, I'm going to turn it over to Connie to talk about WIC.
Good morning. Oh, okay, great. So WIC touches families in every community in Lane County. And services are provided in Eugene, of course, and Cottage Grove, Florence, Oak Ridge, and some services in Springfield as well. And the program serves pregnant and postpartum women, infants and children under age five who have a low or moderately low income level and medical or nutritional risk conditions. That's what makes us a health program. About our core services, we provide health screening, dietary screening is part of that. And we provide individual nutrition education that is geared towards people's specific nutrition risk conditions. Supplemental foods are provided in WIC, they're very specific, and they're of high nutritional value. We have group nutrition classes on a wide variety of topics that we offer to everyone. And high-risk clients receive nutrition counseling through a registered dietitian. Breastfeeding counseling appointments are provided as well as phone consultations and sessions that people can just drop into and bring their babies, have an opportunity to talk to a PD specialist. And clients receive referrals for healthcare, housing, emergency food, lots of other essential services as well. So these are the core WIC services. Just a bit about our numbers right now, we're currently serving 8,100 clients per month. Of that, 2,092 are pregnant and postpartum mothers. And we have 1,881 infants ages zero to 12 months. And just a word about our pregnant women, 47% of all pregnant women in Lane County are participating in the WIC program. And that's higher than the state average. So we have an opportunity to touch lots of pregnant women in the county. So WIC is an evidence-based program, and the services directly contribute to improved health. So infants of WIC mothers have healthier birth weights and less birth complications. Specifically, WIC reduces the risk for preterm babies by 25% and low birth weight by 44%. WIC services are a critical part of our public health efforts to address infant mortality. And we counsel on a wide variety of health issues that come up in WIC appointments. So chronic diseases, obesity, anemia in young children, those are just a couple of examples. So we have a chance to look at really long-term health for women and children. It's also well documented that WIC children have a greater readiness to learn. And breastfeeding is fundamentally important to infant health. So our breastfeeding rates are very high. Our most recent quarter showed that we have an initiation, breastfeeding initiation rate of 96%, which is one of the highest in the state. A little more on the value of WIC. For every dollar spent on a pregnant woman in WIC, up to $4.21 is saved in Medicaid costs. And WIC contributes to the local economy as well. So I'd like to look at that a little bit more on the next slide. So as you can see, over 4.9 million in WIC funds was spent in Lane County in 2014. The majority of this was spent with retailers as a result of clients using their WIC vouchers, although almost 40,000 was spent at farmers markets and farm stands. Our challenge is that it's critical for us to maintain a current, a consistent staffing level in order to continue to provide services and fill the need. I looked at our stats for last month. Out of 1,455 appointments that we conducted, we enrolled 137 new pregnant women just in the month of September, and 129 new mothers and infants. And WIC research shows that earlier in pregnancy, a woman enrolls in WIC, her birth outcomes improve significantly. Lastly, I'd like to mention that WIC is a gateway for a large number of residents who've never sought any other county or community services. So we're able to connect to people with resources. And a great example is our connection with the maternal-child health program, which Chelsea will talk about next.
So under our maternal and child health services umbrella, we have a variety of programs for clients in Lane County. The first we offer is the Oregon Mothers Care, which is one that we have strong partnership, as Connie mentioned, with WIC. And we work to get pregnant women enrolled in Oregon Health Plan if they are eligible and not currently on health insurance, as a fast track to getting them connected to prenatal care. And the sooner we get someone into care, the better their outcomes. And then our other constellation of programs are all home visiting programs. And today, I'm going to focus on our nurse home visiting programs and the outcomes they have in our community. So who do we provide nurse home visiting programs to? Primarily pregnant women and women with young children, zero to three. The majority of our referrals come in through WIC, and we engage families in their pregnancy to provide pregnancy support through maternity case management in our Nurse Family Partnership programs. We prioritize families that have multiple risk factors, such as those that are living in poverty below 100% of the poverty level, those that have a current or past history of substance abuse, those with developmental disabilities, mental health and behavioral health concerns, and medical concerns for the mother of child or child. Recently, we've been seeing a high increased acuity in our referrals. And so we've been seeing referrals coming in that have multiple risk factors. For example, teens that are also using substance use, or clients with developmental disabilities who are also experiencing homelessness. Just highlighting sort of the need in our community, both our numbers of clients that are needing services are increasing, but as well as the actual acuity for each individual Our home visiting programs affect, impact families in Lane County in a variety of ways. We know that pregnant women enrolled in nurse home visiting programs showed a 31% reduction in preterm birth rates. Parents also show a substantial reduction in cigarette smoking. Parents smoking around their child is also a great risk factor for SIDS. And so when we can work with families during pregnancy to reduce their smoking rate, it has improved health outcomes for their child when the child is born. Families in our home visiting programs show a significant decrease in the rates of child abuse and neglect. And mothers who participate in nurse home visiting initiate breastfeeding and continue and sustain breastfeeding at a substantially higher rate than the general population. A little bit about our numbers, looking at the last fiscal year here, we received more than 1,600 referrals in the year for home visiting services. As Connie mentioned, WIC is our largest single referral source, with 62% of referrals coming from WIC. We have been expanding services recently to high-risk families in our community. And so becoming a part of the Community Health Center, as well as greater partnership with Trillium, and increased grant funding through the federal MICFE grant, which stands for Maternal Infant and Child Home Visiting Services. We've been able to expand services throughout Lane County without increasing our share of County General Fund that we're using. In this last fiscal year, we delivered over 2,400 home visits to pregnant women and children ages zero to three throughout the county. And we have current capacity right now for 360 families at any given moment in time with a staff of 12 nurses. We serve families throughout the county, so we go to every single corner of the county if a family is eligible and interested in receiving nurse home visiting services. However, an ongoing challenge for us has been recruitment and retention of these high-quality staff. It's a challenging job, and it's a job our nurses love. They make a profound impact in the families that they see. And yet, it's currently a competitive workforce market in Lane County for healthcare professionals. Finally, I wanted to touch a little bit on one specific program, Nurse Family Partnership. In 2013, Health and Human Services brought Nurse Family Partnership to Lane County. And we are currently in the process of graduating our first cohort of families that enrolled in this program. It's a long-term, two-and-a-half-year program that's nationally and internationally recognized for its strong evidence-based outcomes in families. So a few of the positive outcomes we've seen locally here in Lane County are a high percentage of mothers enrolled in this program who have stopped smoking during pregnancy. We have seen many families that were enrolled in the program that were homeless at the time of enrollment, either camping or living with relatives, who have now entered transitional housing and are in secure permanent housing for them and their child, improving their and their child's health outcomes. Many of our families that are enrolled in Nurse Family Partnership do not have a high school diploma or GED at time of enrollment. And we are seeing a large portion of those families go on to obtain that GED and are currently enrolled in Lane Community College pursuing higher education. And we are seeing our children graduate from the program at two years of age, securely attached, developmentally on target, and on the path to being ready to learn when they start kindergarten in a few years. Thank you.
My turn. I get to do my version of Lions and Tigers and Bears, Risk Response and Recovery. So as Karen mentioned early on, we're going to talk a bit about some of the events on the horizon that we're looking at and are concerned about, and also some of the events that we're dealing with right now, and some of their impacts on Lane County public health. So first, I want to talk about TB. And some time ago, maybe a year ago, year and a half ago, I was here at a Board of Health report, talking briefly about the tent camp rest stop initiative. And one of our goals, working with Mayor Piercy, was to try to see if we can get some appropriate screening of those rest stops around tuberculosis and some other infectious diseases. The rest stops came, we were unable to get screening agreed to for those rest stops. And we didn't have a TB outbreak yet. Unfortunately, Benton County has had a TB outbreak amongst their homeless. And I recall speaking with you one time before that a single active tuberculosis case in the Western world typically results in seven to 10 new cases if it's not caught early. Well, they now have seven confirmed cases from a TB outbreak. Two of those persons have died unfortunately. And I think we should learn from that. Additionally, in terms of workload, a single TB case probably doesn't seem like much to the lay public. I know it seems like a good deal to you because you're not the lay public. But a single TB case typically results in a lot of contact investigation. And you can see the numbers so far, Benton County has had 35 persons in the high-risk category and 50 in the low-risk category they have to follow with testing to make sure that they have not gotten tuberculosis. Additionally, the workload for tuberculosis is really high because treatment is a long time. We start with four drugs every day. People with active TB get therapy for a minimum of nine months. And that DOT listed up there is directly observed therapy. Because no one likes to take pills, much less four pills a day, and also because some of these pills have side effects that need to be monitored, we directly observe people taking these medications. Oftentimes, that means finding them at their place of work, meeting them at a coffee shop, going under a highway bridge. This is a lot of work. So seven cases, as you can imagine, is quite extreme. And you can see in the write-up for the Board of Health report, the other items that Benton County has told us they're doing, they had to hire a new person to deal with this disease outbreak. It's also important to note that, as I said at the outset, we have tent camps and rest stops here. And I think that it's important for us to consider, what does that mean for us? Now that, not necessarily our worst-case scenario, but a scenario we didn't want to see happen actually happened in a county we share a border with, and we should consider how we're going to move forward. Also, I want to mention that TB patients, like other patients, sometimes move around. And we oftentimes have a TB patient during their nine-month time period where they will move to another county. They will go be with mom and dad, for example, or they may have changed jobs. We need to have a place where we can hand off that case to the local county. So I mention this because our county to the south, immediately, South Douglas County is going through a transition in their public health services. We routinely have handoff cases with them. We call them WHO's, W-H-O's, or WHO's. And it's important for us to get a sense of our support staff in our community and our support staff in our nearby counties, and how it is we can share those cases and hand off those cases when patients move. Another cautionary tale is mumps. We don't talk much about mumps anymore. In 2013, our country had a total of only 438 cases. Mumps is typically that picture that you see in medical texts, big swollen glands around your jowls and around the front of your ears, you're like a chipmunk. Unfortunately, on occasion, it causes other problems. Mumps infects glands, it doesn't just infect the salivary glands. As you can see here, in 2014, Ohio had a very large outbreak. 484 cases associated with the other OSU, Ohio State University. And unfortunately, other than salivary glands, they had infections in some of the other glands that mumps typically goes to. So 12 of the students had a testicular infection, eight of them had ovarian infection. A few of them will probably have either hypo fertility, low fertility for the rest of their lives, or they will develop infertility. This is a known side effect of mumps infection. Not very common, but it happens. Also, unfortunately, one student had spread of the disease into their brain and became deaf. Kind of hard to imagine being a 21-year-old college student about ready to get your bachelor's degree, and then you get an infection that's vaccine-preventable, and you end up deaf for the rest of your life. But that's what happens on occasion with these vaccine-preventable conditions. I also want to mention Illinois. There's an outbreak right now amongst several high schools in Illinois. They've broken 100 cases already. We don't have all the clinical data on what's happening, somebody having infection in their ovaries, infection in their testes, brain infection. We don't have that data yet. But certainly, when an outbreak gets that large, we're going to see some of those really nasty side effects in a few people. So what does that mean to us? You've heard many of us in public health say before that we have a low vaccination rate in our county, and we're working hard to raise it. And we've had a little bit of success, but we're not where we want to be. We also have a huge neighborhood problem because other counties near us have low vaccination rates too. And these diseases don't respect county borders, so they spread as they would like. So we have concerns in that area as well. Finally, I want to finish on, I guess, the doom and gloom with whooping cough. And I'm calling this the one sure thing. And I think you'll see why. I really believe we're going to have a big whooping cough outbreak here in Lane County. I can't tell you when, but I think we're going to have one. First, we're surrounded. Our neighborhood is a whooping cough haven. California had two large outbreaks, one in 2010 and one in 2014. Washington has also had two, in 2012 and 2015. When California had their big outbreak in 2010, which spread into 2011, we started a big initiative trying to go out and vaccinate people who didn't have access to healthcare at the time. We hadn't expanded Medicaid, there were many more uninsured. We did a lot of what we call T-DAP vaccination clinics with 100 vaccines at a time, reached a lot of people. And I really believe we had an impact. To be surrounded by states with massive whooping cough outbreaks and not to have our own, I think we did something right. I won't put that in writing, and I hope you erase the tapes, but I think we made an impact. That being said, the vaccine isn't perfect. We would love to have a whooping cough vaccine that was as good as measles, where well over 95% of people get immunity. The whooping cough vaccine is 75 to 80% effective in adults. And immunity wears off over time. So that's kind of the second hit of why I think whooping cough is the sure thing to bet on for a big outbreak. Third is, again, our immunization rate. When I first moved to Oregon, Oregon was the worst in the country for vaccination. And Lane County was the third worst out of 36 counties. So we were amongst the worst of the worst in the United States. We've improved a bit. We're about number 10 of counties in terms of worst immunization rates for kindergartners. So we're making progress, but we're still not where we want to be. And finally, whooping cough is one of those bugs, one of those bacterias that spreads like wildfire. And we call it the reproduction number, or the RNaught, it's about 15. So a single case of whooping cough produces 15 new cases. To give you a comparison, influenza, a single flu case only produces about two new flu cases. So this is one of those bugs that can spread like wildfire. And if you take the inverse of 15, I kind of like the math of infectious disease epidemiology, one over 15 is 94. We need to get about a 94% vaccine rate in our citizens in order to prevent a massive outbreak. We're at about 90. So, you know, that coin has two sides. On the one hand, nine out of 10 of our kids are getting vaccinated. On the other hand, it's not quite high enough to prevent a wildfire outbreak. So I'm pretty concerned about that on the horizon. So a way forward for us, kind of horizon-gazing or looking at the horizon, I think we need to continue strongly leveraging the programs that we do have. You certainly saw that this year with the meningitis outbreak at the university. We begged, borrowed and stole from all of the programs. Connie was on, actually, for meningitis. We had nurses from the MCH program as well. We took everybody we could to, all hands on deck, so to speak. I also think that we need to learn from what happened with the tent camps, or what's happening actually now in Benton County. We need to make a change as regards our tent camp screening policy. I would strongly recommend that. I think we need to continue our robust policy work to raise immunization rates. We were fortunate two years ago to have your support on Senate Bill 132 to change the way that people can opt out of immunizations. And that's really had an impact, an 18% decrease in immunization exemptions in the state in the first year. I suspect we'll see another 15 to 20% decrease in exemptions, meaning more people are getting vaccinated. And we need to continue that high-level policy work. And then finally, I'm just going to mention a project that Karen and I and Communicable Z staff have put together. We need to pursue other evidence-based collaborations meeting specific needs. You've heard me talk before about STDs, and I bet you were hoping I didn't do it again today, but I'm going to sneak it in. We still have an STD problem, and we have identified a pretty significant population in the inmate population with very high STD rates. So three weeks ago, we started a screening project with the JL. After about a year of planning, going along quite well right now, we're screening inmates should they choose to be screened for chlamydia, gonorrhea and syphilis. And we're hoping that that will make a big difference with the STD rates in the broader community as a whole. I think the way forward for us from an infectious disease standpoint, if we continue with these four bullets, we will be okay, but there are many challenges ahead. Thank you.
So Chair Bozovic, that is our presentation today. We wanted to save plenty of time for questions from the Board or discussion among the Board. Again, our tradition for these semi-annual reports is it's really your opportunity to not only hear about public health, but also all the other parts of Health and Human Services. And I know you have that information in the written report, so I'm happy to answer any questions about the material there or the presentation today.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you very much. Great report. I could listen to you all for hours. You know, I have a couple of questions initially. Connie, you mentioned 40%, nearly half of women in Lane County are on the WIC program?
Yes.
Pregnant women in Lane County. Why such a high number? You said it was one of the higher in the state, or maybe the highest in the state.
Pregnant women are our highest priority for WIC because we do have an impact on the birth outcomes. And so we do focus our outreach on pregnant women, and we want to make sure they, you know, access us quickly. So we do get a lot of referrals from healthcare providers and other service agencies. And also, people do think of us when they are short on food. And we do have a fairly high poverty rate here in Lane County. So I think that reflects partly why we're above the state average.
I was hoping to hear the first part of that and expecting to hear the second part of that. The fact that our outreach program is robust and very effective, I think that's characteristic of our health department, that, you know, reaching out and bringing more people in for the service that they need than the service that they are, let's see, are eligible for, shall we say. But the poverty side of that, I think, we talk about that quite frequently, about people in poverty tend to gravitate toward services if we reach out and bring them in. And I'm really encouraging, you know, reaching out to all of the places so we can bring people in for their service. You know, it's something we did at Food for Lane County with our, with a food stamp program. You know, we got Lane County up to one of the highest rates in the entire nation on food stamps. Because people who are eligible for the services really should be receiving the services. Otherwise, all kinds of, Dr. Ledke can give us all kinds of stories about what doesn't happen if people don't receive the services that they're eligible for and the services they need. So I wanted to really highlight the fact that your outreach program is getting deep into the community. And we are, you're probably close to 100% of the women that are eligible, probably in the 90s, I would guess.
It's hard to say. I know that there are still some other women who are on Oregon Health Plan who don't access WIC for whatever reason. And that's one of the places that we focus our outreach to. About 85% of the pregnant women on OHP are also on WIC. And we'd like to see that at 100%.
I don't know, there'll always be a certain number of people who simply will not access the program for personal reasons that are conditions that we can't really address, without talking about them right now. And I wanted to mention also the breastfeeding, 96% of women are breastfeeding. Wow, that's a significant number. Is that women on WIC or women in Lane County?
That's women on the WIC program.
Do you have a comparative number? You have a comparative number for the general population in Lane County?
It's high in Lane County. I'm thinking the last number I saw was around 91%.
So you're not able to get to 100 though, huh?
We try.
Commissioner Farr, I just want to add there, because Connie might not be willing to brag on her staff and her program as much, but last time, we had a review from the state WIC office. They were hugely complimentary of the work that we've been doing to promote breastfeeding. All of the components of WIC, we know, lead to good outcomes. But certainly, breastfeeding has just huge health impacts for those babies. And so Connie, I don't know if you want to talk, I know there was a recent award and some other things specifically around breastfeeding.
The award was actually a couple of years ago, but we have continued on that vein. Actually, Oregon received a large sum from the federal government because our whole state had a very high breastfeeding rate. But our county in particular, I think we're the, one of the three top counties in the state for breastfeeding initiation. Our challenge, though, is to keep women breastfeeding because if, as people have babies, they start having challenges that first and second week, sometimes people give it up and think, oh, this is too difficult. And so we work really hard to make sure that people get advice as quickly as they possibly can right after having babies. So we do, we have weekly drop-in sessions, as I mentioned, and the average age of an infant coming into our drop-in sessions is six days old. So that's really key for us because we want to make sure we're getting that support and counseling to them quickly.
Excellent. And the benefits of breastfeeding are much heralded. And I think Dr. Ledke can talk about the natural immunities that occurs through breastfeeding. Not that we would want to diminish the number of immunizations that we're pushing for. I have one further question, Mr. Chair, and this is for Dr. Ledke. You'd mentioned that when you came here, Lane County was the lowest in immunization rates, or one of the lowest immunization rates. What about now?
So we were the third worst 2010-11 school year. 2011-12, we stayed the third worst. 2012-13, we moved up one to the fourth worst. Now we're 10th, tied for 10th. And yet, it's still not where we want to be. I mentioned about whooping cough. We need a 94 to 95% immunization rate to prevent that wildfire massive outbreak that's going to disrupt society. Measles is the same. Measles has about the same reproductive number, right around 15, 16 new cases from one case. We're not there with measles either. We need to be up around 95% vaccination rate to prevent that. And we're not alone. There are plenty of places in the country that have had significant measles and whooping cough outbreaks because people are choosing not to get vaccinated, or we're making it too easy to not get vaccinated, depending on your point of view.
And I think you've done a superb job of elevating people's awareness of why they should get vaccinated and eliminating the reasons that people have for not getting vaccinated, you know, not trusting the government, whatever it may be, you know. You mentioned 94% is one in 15 kindergartners would achieve 94% of.
percent. We're at about one in ten currently, you mentioned. That's quite a jump that we have to take. But I'm curious, you know, we have a lot of great statistics that are drilled right down to the grade school block level. Do we have numbers on where the kindergarteners in Lane County, which grade school block level are they not being immunized in, or?
We do, indeed. We even have nice maps of the county with the schools that have rates below the ninety-five percentile that we want to reach. And we work very closely with our school exclusion every February. You know, we work very closely with the school nurses. If the school has a nurse, some schools do not anymore, trying to raise those vaccination rates.
And you have it drilled down to the block, the grade school level, which is typically school districts have that kind of detailed information. I think it'd be interesting to provide that information to each of the five county commissioners and enlist each of our helps in working specifically with the school districts inside of our districts, and maybe right down to the principal, to the building level, to see how we can, if we can elevate people's attention to it. One in ten to one in fifteen is a big step, but it's something that seems that it could be achievable if we work really hard. And addressing it at a level that we can really identify specifically where the issue can be targeted is a good approach to taking care of it. You know, when I hear that we're the worst in anything, I want to find out why we're the worst and who is the best, you know, and what are they doing that we're not doing, and what kind of techniques are they using that we can borrow. Through my life, I've, you know, I worked at a large company where we didn't invent anything, but you'd see who's doing it the best, and you try to copy them in whatever way that you can. And I like to get to the point where we're the ones that people come to Lane County and copy the way we do things. And so, looking at where we're the worst and finding out who's the best and making us the best, I'm very interested in moving in that direction. Thank you.
Commissioner Laitman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, very good presentation, so really appreciate that. Couple of questions. First, on the Nurse Family Partnership, where does the funding for that primarily come from?
That's a great question. We receive federal grant funding for the Nurse Family Partnership Program passed through the state of Oregon called the MiCPY Grant, stands for maternal, infant, and early childhood home visiting. The federal government has looked at a variety of home visiting programs and selected a handful that have the most robust evidence base behind them, and Nurse Family Partnership is one of that. So, we receive a large grant from the federal government, as well as we bill for our services. So, we bill targeted case management, maternity case management through the state Medicaid offices.
Very good.
And then we receive some county general.
Okay, so some county general, okay. And so, on the, when I look at the, let's see here, on the information that's provided, so ninety-three percent of babies were born at healthy weight, ninety-one percent were born full-term, ninety-five, so on and so forth. This looks like a state profile. Do you have this narrowed down to what Lane County looks like, or is that information available?
That's an excellent question. We are still a really new program here in Lane County, so we do not have Lane County-specific outcomes at this time, because we're just graduating our first cohort of clients. In a couple of years, we will have data that's specific.
Very good. Because when you look at the state numbers, that's pretty impressive, and it looks like it's a program that's very helpful. And then when you look at the, narrow it down to the demographics, I mean, the median age, nineteen-years-old unmarried, I imagine an unmarried nineteen-year-old, this is not what this young lady was expecting. So, the fact that you have something available for our program like this, I'm very impressed. So, that's great. Thank you. Dr. Lutke, so on the tuberculosis issue, so we just saw that it looks like there's a challenge in Benton County. Right now, we're not necessarily facing one, but my question really goes to the fact that we've had some of the, what I would call, the illegal camping sites. So, our first responders are involved in helping to clean this up. So, are our, like, for instance, the deputy sheriffs, the public works, are they prepared? So, or do they have some sort of, can they wear something in case there is a TB issue that is occurring within one of these homeless camps? Are they prepared to deal with this, because it's obviously extremely contagious? And the last thing we'd want is, like, for our employees who are trying to do the good work, helping to clean up, whether it's deputy sheriff, or whether it's working with the Eugene Police, so on and so forth, Springfield PD, we have issues over in Springfield, too. So, are they prepared for maybe to be careful that there's that potential, or are you working with our first responders on this?
So, we are indeed working with them, and I think it's fortunate that we had really a test drill last fall with Ebola, and we had multiple meetings with EMS, multiple planning sessions, looking at what they would do with personal protective equipment, do they have a supply, they have training to use the equipment appropriately, and a good deal of that bleeds off into other infectious conditions such as tuberculosis. So, I would say, and I don't want to speak for them, but I would say that our EMS groups are indeed prepared. I can't speak to how deep their bench is, you know, if their budget's full and such, but they certainly are ready to respond immediately. Can they respond for six months straight? I'm not sure, given resources, but I think they're ready.
Okay, good. That's great. So, I appreciate that. I think that's important, and because I don't want people to realize that when we have an issue, in particular, of an illegal camping site, who's out there right away? And it's what I would call the first responders. And you do have a concern that you want to make sure that they're protected, knowing that there's this potential. So, I appreciate that. Again, very good presentation, and thank you for all the great work that our Public Health Department and Health and Human Services does. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for a very good presentation. Connie, I was wondering, one of the questions I had for you is, we have some pretty large numbers, eight thousand-plus clients, twenty-one hundred approximately pregnant individuals that we're working with. I was curious, in kind of a perspective, is, are we seeing that increase, the number of people that we're serving, and how are we addressing the need in our community? Are we pretty much dealing with everybody that we can, or are we limited by staff, resources? Can you give me a feel on how we're doing there?
That's a tricky question. Our services have increased for several years, and then recently nationwide, they've kind of plateaued. It's not that there's not a need. Like I mentioned, we still saw a hundred and thirty-seven new pregnant women last month, and about the same number of mothers and infants. So, there's always new people coming in, and like I mentioned, there's a little bit more that we can be doing in terms of getting OHP-eligible women into, you know, the rest of that percentage of eligible women into WIC. So, we definitely have the need. There've been some things nationwide that have just caused WIC to plateau for a little while, but what I was told in our last review was, of all of the large counties in Oregon, WIC, our WIC program here has been able to maintain our caseload better than a lot of the other large counties, any of the other large counties.
Connie, if I can add a little bit to that question, because the, out of all of the programs in Health and Human Services, there's probably the longest and most extensive body of research in terms of positive outcomes to the WIC program. It's been thirty, forty years in the making, and it had lots of studies. So, we know it's an excellent investment, and we want to get it to as many people as we can. So, along those lines, in January, the program is shifting from paper vouchers to electronic vouchers. So, as soon as we get past that transition, Connie's been working with Ron Jelm out at our Riverstone Clinic in the Community Health Centers, and we'll be starting to offer WIC services over in Springfield at Riverstone. And Connie might be a little nervous that I'm saying that out loud to the public, because we'll start small and grow. And I remember when Commissioner Dwyer was here, that was very important to him, is to get public health services, and in particular, WIC, back out in Springfield. And so, we've been able to carve out some space at the Riverstone Clinic, and Connie will have staff begin to work out there, and we're hoping to build that caseload, because we know, we have current clients for whom it would be much more convenient, certainly, to be at Riverstone. And we also know that there are women and children in Springfield who might be able to participate in the program if it were closer to where they are. So, we continue to try and think about what are, within our existing resources, the innovative strategies we can do to get more people signed up.
Yeah, great. Well, I was just trying to relate it to the number of people, if I recall correctly, serving about forty-eight percent of the individuals that are pregnant, right? And so, I'm thinking that, you know, some of our school systems, we, you know, we can go probably anywhere from fifty to seventy-five percent of the children that are in our school system qualify for free and reduced lunches. And so, you know, does that mean that, you know, it's possible that we should be or could be serving, you know, our populace should be maybe closer to, you know, sixty, seventy percent instead of fifty? I mean, is there any coalition, you know, coalition to that that could represent the possible need in the community?
You're saying to what we're seeing in the schools, for instance?
Oh, I'm just trying to say, okay, I know that hypothetically seventy percent of the students or families in the South Lane School District qualify for free and reduced lunch, and let's just say that we're dealing, and we're only helping hypothetically fifty percent of the pregnant folks down on the Kajagoa area. Does that mean potentially we have a twenty percent range that could, you know, qualify or for that program?
I would like to check that out. That would be an interesting way to look at our potential for growth. But, you know, I don't really have a clear answer for that. I just know that we constantly hear of people coming in who had never heard of our program before, and so there is still a great need out there. And it does make sense that it would be perhaps closer to seventy percent.
And I think, and this is where Connie knows the details much better than I do, in terms of eligibility for the program, it's both income-based and health-based criteria, right? So, the income requirement is?
It's one hundred and eighty-five percent of the poverty-income guidelines. So, for a household of four, I think it's thirty-four hundred dollars a month gross that you can have, that, don't quote me on that exactly, but it's pretty close to that, that you can have coming into your household and still qualify for WIC. And that means that people can be working families, not necessarily making a lot of money, but they can be working families that are on WIC. In fact, sixty-six percent of our families are working families, you know, to some extent. So...
So, that's the income requirement. So, you have to be low-income in order to qualify, and then remind me what the health, I know it's a little...
So, we do health screening to determine what medical or nutritional risks people have. Could be some real health conditions that people have on the program, or it could be dietary needs, people aren't getting enough calcium in their diet, or they have food allergies and they can't eat a large selection of food, or, there's loads of reasons why people qualify for the WIC program, and we have to sort out which ones they are so that we can address those with nutrition counseling. So, that is what makes it a health program.
Yeah, crunch those numbers a little bit more and get you a more specific answer.
All right, thank you. Chelsea, I had a question for you, please. So, you had mentioned the number of families living in poverty. I was curious, do you have a number that's for Lane County's, I think, that we're using for families in poverty?
The percentage of our clients on caseload that are in poverty, or?
Just in general?
I don't, off the top of my head.
I should, but I don't.
I know it is.
It is knowable.
It is higher in Lane County than many other counties in Oregon, but I don't know the exact figure.
I was curious, okay, thanks.
If only Steve Marinell were here, he would know.
He would know, yeah. And Karen, I had a question that hopefully you can help carry me out. So, the number of clients that we serve in our family-qualified health clinics, what's our number that we're up to?
Number of patients we serve.
Yeah.
Pat, I don't know if you've heard that recently, I hate to put a bad number out there, total number of patients?
MCHC?
Uh-huh.
I don't know. I can give you a ballpark.
That's fine. So, a year ago, we had a hundred and twenty thousand encounters with twenty-two thousand patients.
Twenty-two thousand.
So, with our expansion new clinic, we're probably in the twenty-eight to thirty? Hopefully, we get close to thirty, okay. That helps me. And then, is there, so I've heard a ninety thousand figure, is that the total that are in our county that's eligible?
The ninety thousand to a hundred thousand number has been the number of people in Lane County who are on the Oregon Health Plan. So, those are, certainly, you don't have to be on the Oregon Health Plan to come to the Community Health Centers, but that's what that number is, the people who are on Medicaid in Lane County.
All right. And just a comment, Dr. Lutke, I want to thank you for your effort there in the jail. It's going to be interesting to hear, you know, future reports on the progress and that, but I think that that's a great place to, I mean, we've got a captive audience, and hopefully, we can help folks that are in there. I mean, not saying that it's, the entire population has issues, but I think it's a, you know, hopefully, something that's going to bear fruit that, you know, that'll reduce the incidences of STDs in our county. So, thank you for that.
So, we have a ten o'clock time certing coming up, so in order to be more brief, I'm just going to ask for maybe you get back to me on the number question I have by email. Just, I'd like to know the total unduplicated served in two thousand and fourteen by the WIC program, so I can kind of figure out, unless you have that right off the top of your head.
I do have that. I have to dig it out.
For the entire year. While you're digging that out, I'll just make a couple other quick statements. You know, one, I was going to ask Dr. Lutke about whether he's worked with Nigengale and Occupy Medical on trying to get screenings in some of these camps and how that's going, and maybe it's something you need to work with Mr. Mokraheisky on as he works in cell with the other, the city administrator. The one thing that we did not touch on today, though, is mental health, and it's been in the news an awful lot. Yeah, we heard from Mr. Trump on Sunday in the Register Guard about the struggles he's had dealing with the mental health system in the state. I would just ask that you think about, and we even heard this for the visiting nurses program, how can we go about, as board, lobbying for what we need to do to increase the number of primary care providers in Lane County, whether they're nurses for that program or mental health folks for our mental health programs? If you can think about that and talk to the board, and we can get it through our legislative committee and try and do what we need to do just to increase that population in Lane County, whether it's lobbying for residency programs at local hospitals here, or, you know, trying to get parts of our county declared underserved rural areas so that we can get reimbursement for student loans, you know, and hang on to people for four years, and hopefully, they'll like it enough to stay. But, you know, what do you think's effective in doing that? And provide that to the board, so that we can be taking actions that help the system out.
Commissioner Bozovic, we absolutely can follow up in writing, but just since there are some viewers, if I can take just a moment to respond, that is a critical issue, both the workforce issue that you raised, and of course, mental health, that I know we've talked with you as a Board of Health a lot about. The workforce piece, I did want to update you that we've been working on an Oregon Solutions Project here in Lane County, and actually, the signing for that is scheduled for the third week in November, sometime during AOC. I don't remember exactly what day it is, but that will be the culmination of several meetings that have included the Nurse Practitioner and Physician Assistant Training Schools statewide. Our leaders here in Lane County, it's actually been co-chaired by June Chata from Senator Wyden's office and Debbie Farr from Trillium, to really come up with some concrete solutions for at least that piece of the provider recruitment effort. So, I'm encouraged by that work moving forward, and I know we've talked with you about a residency program, and this last year has been very focused on opening a new clinic, and so I think in two thousand and sixteen, we'll have a little bit of strategic bandwidth to think about what can we do as a health center that will help provide more opportunities for residents here in the community, too, and we'll follow up with more on an email.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. Did you want to?
I just want to make one mention about the residency program. I'm obviously biased, I'm a physician, and I don't think physicians are the cure for everything. I think we need PAs and NP's as well. However, we had a few students from the University of Oregon working on a project for us, and there was a little extra time because the project was going well. So, we had one of them look up for population-based residency programs across the United States, and they didn't quite finish the project, but I think we are the largest population in the country that has no residency program. So, we are approaching four hundred thousand citizens. We have no family practice, pediatrics, internal medicine, psychiatry, OB-GYN residency, none. And I think we are the largest population center in the country with that poor distinction.
Yeah, and, you know, Good Samaritan Corvallis just started a psychiatric residency program, DO, not MD, but it's still, you know, Corvallis can manage to attract a residency program, and particularly, mental health, it'd be nice if we could attract one down here in Lane County. So, you know, hopefully, we can keep working on that, but anything we can do as a board to assist in those efforts, I'd... But anything we can do as a board to assist in those efforts, I'd, I'd like to understand because that's really where the rubber meets the road. And anything we can do to help coordinate with Eugene about screenings and camps and trying to control that, because, you know, TB is, you know, maybe not be the most imminent risk we face, but it's such a high-cost managed disease that, that it would save a lot of resources if we could prevent an outbreak versus having to deal with the case management. And it's, I really appreciate your presentation. Any other questions or comments, if you can make it fast?
Just one, very fast one. I hear about the residency program quite often over at the dinner table. Regular topic in our household. But I just wanted to ask a question about WIC. You mentioned close to five million dollars in WIC funds are funneled through the county, through the farm, farm program and through the, through grocery stores. Is that spent like cash in grocery stores?
Yes, right now we have paper vouchers. People take them to the store and redeem them for the WIC foods. And as Karen mentioned, in January, we're going to be moving to E-WIC, which is an electronic benefit card, like a debit card that people will use.
Like the SNAP card?
Yes.
And I knew the answer to that before I asked you the question. The fact is, you know, a lot of people don't fully understand that WIC dollars are spent just like cash in grocery stores. And if it's the local grocery store on the corner or the Safeway store down the street, it is cash entering our community, being recirculated throughout the community just the way cash is. And SNAP is the same way. And enrolling more people to, to provide them with the greater access to nutrition is beneficial to everybody, not just the families that are, that are accessing the nutrition, but, but to the, the people who are selling the food. You know, it's, it's just a fantastic program. The more outreach that we can provide, the more people we can bring into the program who are eligible, the greater the, the benefit to the entire community. So thanks very much. Thanks for the presentation, thanks for all the work.
Could I slip in the answer to Commissioner Bozovic's question as well? You asked about the number of unduplicated persons served in WIC for two thousand fourteen, and that was twelve thousand nine hundred forty-eight women, infants and children for last year.
Excellent, thank you. I was just going to do some math and divide that into four point nine million, but I won't do that on the fly here. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the Board of Health meeting. And then I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Lain County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, November third, two thousand fifteen. And the first item of the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. And we are, been requested to pull item five C two by staff from the consent calendar. So the consent calendar will be minus item five C two. And I'll just remind folks, we have a ten o'clock time certain and an eleven o'clock time certain exec session, and we also have a lunch commitment today. So we, we've got a lot on our schedule. Any further adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, then we'll move on to public comment. Is there anybody signed up for public comment? And nobody's signed up for public comment, then we'll move on to commissioners' response to public comment and/or other remonstrance. Seeing none, then is there any emergency business?
No.
No emergency business, then we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar as amended, removing item five C two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So we are actually five minutes ahead of schedule. I was a little concerned there for a minute. Mr. Mokrheisky, do you have any announcements you want to make before we move into our time certain?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair. A couple items. First, today's election day, so I thought I'd provide you with a brief update on the election. It's important to note, because I know the commissioners and we have received and our elections offices have received some emails from folks who didn't receive their ballots. If you don't live in the city of Eugene, city of Springfield, or the Southland County Fire and Rescue District, you would not have received a ballot because there's not an election for you to vote on. So only residents in the city of Eugene, in the city of Springfield, and in the Southland County Fire and Rescue District receive ballots. We've received, this is as of this morning, our voter turnout is twenty-eight point seven five percent, thirty-eight thousand six hundred and twelve ballots, through yesterday's mail, I should say. We are doing, opening and pre-inspection of boards. There are twelve teams with four people per team that will begin today at six PM. The results of the election will be released at eight PM and ten PM, and then when our staff concludes for the night, which should be by around midnight. So that's the update on the election. We've got a couple other minutes, and I thought, I imagine this topic will come up in our next discussion with Trillium. But Karen Gaffney mentioned that the opening of the Delta Oaks Clinic happened yesterday, and so we are seeing patients at our Delta Oaks Clinic. We'll have a, an opening ceremony that will take place, I believe, November sixteenth, two weeks from yesterday. And of course, the commissioners and members of the public are invited to that. But just a couple points about this, and again, I think our staff and Trillium staff will share more on this. It's really an outstanding partnership that we have in our community health clinics, and it's a partnership between Lain County, Trillium Health, and our community. This clinic at Delta Oaks will provide comprehensive primary care services, including adult medicine, pediatrics, internal medicine, family planning, and integrated behavioral health. We've talked a lot about the innovative model of care that we're providing here in Lain County. We're coordinating our primary care and behavioral health services in the same setting, which really increases access for patients. I think the number is something in the range of eighty percent, around eighty percent of patients that are referred to behavioral health services in a clinic actually get care, and I believe it's under ten percent. If they have to go outside that clinic, only ten, around ten percent will actually get care. So it's a, seems like a rather simple operational practice, but it's had a significant impact on the quality and access to care for our residents. There are sixteen primary care exam rooms, one bariatric procedure room, a group education room, behavioral health specialist office, provider and support staff spaces that house six primary care providers, one mental health provider, one community outreach worker, and seventeen support staff. And just a note on the project, you know, credit, the board won't be surprised, to Brian Krainer, our Capital Projects team, of course, Ron Jome, Alicia, Karen, and the whole team in Health and Human Services. In March, we started looking at site options, March of two thousand fifteen. May eighth was the kickoff meeting with the contractors. November second, which was yesterday, was the first patient visits. And then again, on November sixteenth, we'll have the grand opening. It was a really incredible, quick timeline, and hopefully it's a reflection of the efficiency and effectiveness of our team here in Lain County to deliver outstanding services to the community. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for Commissioner Farr?
Did they get the balloons off the side of the building yet?
We, we were joking at agenda team meeting this morning that it'll be an interesting grand opening on the sixteenth, maybe some extra streamers and balloons from the Parties to Go facility that we took over.
Yeah. If there are no further questions, I think we are close enough to ten o'clock to move back to item six A, which is a discussion of Trillium and the Affordable Care Act. And I believe we have Terry Copeland, if you want to come on up and sit at the desk, and some guests. And I don't know if you have any presentation first before we open it up to the commissioners for questions, but I'll.
Good morning, Commissioner Bozovic. We're, we're getting seated here. And I want to introduce, we have several people in the audience and here at the table for this agenda item. I know at the end you've met Terry Copeland, our CEO of Trillium Community Health Plan. He's been with us a number of times before. And Mark Fairbanks is the CFO for the Oregon Health Authority, and he's driven down to join us for this discussion. And I'm going to call her out, even though she wouldn't come to the table. Rhonda Busek is in the audience as well. The Health Authority has been undergoing a significant restructuring, so I probably don't have Rhonda's title correct anymore. But I know her as the Deputy Director for Oregon's Medicaid Program, so certainly Rhonda can come flying up from the back to answer any questions if those come up that are appropriate as well. So today, we didn't plan a presentation as such. For the viewing public, I'll tee it up a little bit. At our last Board of Health meeting where we were talking about our Community Health Improvement Plan, you had some questions about the recent transition of Aggett Health Resources, which owned Trillium Community Health Plans, and their transition to Centene. And so we talked about that and the ongoing relationship that Lain County has had since Trillium became a coordinated care organization here locally in August of two thousand twelve. And you asked for more discussion about that. And so to be part of that discussion, Terry and Mark are here, and I'm here to answer questions as well. But I think it would be wonderful to hear from you, what questions or concerns you had. I don't know, Terry or Mark, if you had any opening comments before?
If I may, I'm, I'm Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name's Terry Copeland, I'm the CEO of Trillium Community Health Plan. So I, I understand, well, first of all, I would like to say how impressed I am, again, with your, with your team to open this clinic in such a short period of time and under such difficult circumstances these days. This is the second year that your, your team from the county have endeavored to open a clinic in a matter of months, to stand up a brand-new clinic and provide services to members. We're, we are so in need of more primary care in particular. So I would just like to compliment the entire team and the work that they've done. Very, very impressive. Secondly, I understand that you have some questions about the, the funding gap or the projected funding gap for the seventeen nineteen biennium, and then the biennium, the nineteen twenty-one biennium as well. So Mr. Fairbanks, CFO of the, for the Oregon Health Authority, has kindly volunteered to come down and give some detail and color to that. And, and has also allowed me to share a tool that the Oregon Health Authority uses to do, it's really a sensitivity analysis that the Oregon Health Authority uses to do a projection of, of what those budget concerns or needs will be in the coming bienniums. If I may, I would like to pass this out.
I appreciate it, thank you. You want to hand it to Commissioner Farr, you can pass them down.
Thank you.
Again, this is a, not a budget document, it's simply a tool that's used to make projection analysis and the sensitivity analysis. And so if I could ask Mark here to give an overview, would that be okay, Mr. Chair?
Great.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you for having me. Good to meet you. A little bit of background, as I, as you know, I'm the Chief Financial Officer now for the Oregon Health Authority. I began this gig in May, be May twentieth exactly. So I just crossed over five months, and now I'm a resident expert in all things healthcare transformation. I spent a fair amount of time in central Oregon with the St. Charles Health System. I've also worked in Oregon for United Health. And I also have been a practice administrator for a large surgical practice, and then noticed the Center for Orthopedic and Neurosurgical Care. So my background is really in the, the area almost on the other side of state, in running Medicaid, Medicare plans in Arizona, Texas, and Michigan, and in central Oregon, and thinking about integrated delivery design. So that colors my thinking and my perspectives a little bit. I just thought I would share that with you. What we have handed out, this is a tool that was developed just before my arrival by our budget staff. And it is a, as, as Terry pointed out, it is a sensitivity tool. It's a tool that we use first for internal sensitivity or projecting and forecasting. And in this case, you're looking at a projection that is based on a set of, of particular and very specific assumptions. What this allows us to do is we proceed with our efforts on some of the key indicators and the key attributes of this, of what drives our funding from the federal government and the state share. This helps us to, you know, evaluate or at least template, you know, some of the decisions we might make and some of the alternatives before us, to see what the impact could be within a reasonable range. This also enables our, our Board of Directors, which is our legislature, to also, within its committees, entertain analysis, and we can use this tool to assist them. So I'll just going to walk through some of the notes here. You'll see that the, the basic construction of this, this projection is to identify the source of funding, and then through the bienniums, fifteen seventeen, which is our current biennium, and then the following in seventeen nineteen, and the following nineteen twenty-one. So essentially, it's a six-year projection, and we're in, we're in flight in that first tranche, if you will, the first biennium. Some of the key points here, you find in the assumptions and in the, and in the footnotes, I will point out that if you go down, I think it's pretty clear, general fund, hospital assessment, tobacco tax, other funds, which is a bunch of other things. There's some carryover from the prior biennium. You see an item known as DSHP, which is affectionately known as DISHBE, and that is footnoted, is the Designated State Health Programs. These are under the Medicaid waiver. This is the federal funding for services that are not traditionally allowable in the federal match. And this ends, the DISHBE is scheduled to end in June two thousand, two thousand seventeen, so at the end of the current biennium. So notice in the subsequent bienniums, there is no indicator, there are no number for DISHBE funding. So basically, our key assumptions, our per member, per month, per month amount is assumed at the maximum, or limited, if you will, capped at our current federal waiver, three point four percent. This is what's known as sustainability for our programs. The current benefits, we've assumed to stay constant. We are using our projections based on the data that is vetted by the caseload forecasting committee, which is also footnoted, if you'll notice on number two on your sheet, you will have a little bit of detail there for what that committee is and who attends. The caseload assumes a growth rate of one point two percent a year. That's consistent with the projected population growth. The hospital revenue projection, that's the assessment, aligns up with the current legislation, which will sunset on September thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. So no more funds from that particular device, I guess I'd call it. No change in the tobacco tax or the master settlement related to that. And we've assumed no general fund increase, which is pretty conservative on our part because that general fund has increased historically an average of five percent per year. So with all that said, you can see that when you go to the seventeen nineteen biennium, we are projecting a four hundred and ninety-seven million, or almost a half a billion gap. This is known, most people call that the funding gap. And again, the primary levers that are being, that will address that gap are certainly the growth rate and the general fund will help to ameliorate, we believe, some of that. We will be very focused on our caseload estimates and the, and the coming on of our new eligibility system, known as the ONE, Oregon ONE eligibility system. We will be looked, that's, you'll see the footnote at the top, talking about risks, talks about the analysis assumes successful management of new technology, caseload renewals, closures, and redeterminations, and the continuing efforts we have in place for, for fraud management and resources for the Medicaid eligibility, the Medicaid population. So in a nutshell, then, there are various levers, not the least of which is the, is the waiver. As we go forward into seventeen nineteen, we'll be working on the waiver for that biennium. We're working on it now, and this summer, I believe, is when we will be lifting that to CMS for its first round of consideration. There we go. Turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So I, I believe those, that your interest is what, what happens to fill that five hundred million dollar gap in the next biennium? And then in the following biennium, the one point seven billion dollar gap? So, you know, as, as Mark has said, just to sum it, summarize, the work with the waiver for two thousand seventeen will help to address this. There is some projected general fund growth, I believe. There is some projected general fund growth, I believe, 5%. Hospital tax replacement money will be there. And then, there's work also to, by moving to the, quote, "the one system," increased scrutiny and ability to find and ferret out member fraud as well. And so, and there's a lot of other efficiencies that the system, in terms of transformation and other efforts, will also see the benefits of. So, there is a plan to move forward to cover those gaps. The important thing, I think you should look, in looking at this tool, is the assumptions, particularly the membership, the caseload assumptions, which will have a huge impact on what these dollar amounts will look like. And so, there's some really difficult projections that are being made to try to understand what the real funding gap is. So, I wanted to be sure that, to get this information to you and to be able to answer any questions or have the resources here that we can answer any questions, and any other questions that you may wish to ask.
Chair Bozovic, I appreciate you taking the time this morning. I know you posed this specific question at the Board of Health, so I appreciate the fact that the Health Authority has sent Mark down to answer, to the best of the ability, what the crystal ball looks like now, moving forward, and certainly for us to be able to talk about impacts in the local community that you might have questions on.
Yeah, those are definitely some scary big numbers. I thought I saw Commissioner Stewart with his hand up with a question.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'll just, I'll start off by asking about these scary big numbers. So, Terry, you kind of mentioned, I think, the state funds. I'm sure that the state will probably have the general fund or find some way to come up with, it looks like an estimated 500 million, close to 500 million for the next biennium. And then, it even gets scarier, looking at 1.6 billion. But then, I look down at the federal funds. Is there already a program established that's going to, you know, people be able to draw on to get, I mean, 1.4 billion, and then, two years later, 3.4? Or is that what's the task ahead is, is that you have to get into a budget and find those monies and get them coming?
To be sure, I think that's exactly right. It's the task, over the next four years in particular, to figure out how to address these funding gaps. But again, there's some general concepts already in place from which to work. If there are further details, I would just ask Mark if there are. But I, my understanding is that that's the work ahead of us right now.
So, just hypothetically, think on worst-case scenario because hopefully it'll never happen. But what if, what if there's a $2 billion shortfall in the program in the next biennium? What does that mean to the program?
My take on that would mean that the entire state, not just the Health Authority, would really suffer the consequences of that. So, I think everything from healthcare to education would be impacted by that. And the detail of how that would be impacted, I don't know. But, you know, we've, the state has faced these kind of issues in the past and have been able to deal with them. So, I think there are so many committed people to dealing with this that it's not going to be a worst-case scenario. But it would be, it would be a disaster if we can't, if we can't address this issue.
Yeah, well, it's good to know this now for me personally, but, you know, as I have conversations with the school system and they're talking about the things that they face, and, you know, yeah, they got more money, but yeah, they got a huge increase of responsibility that have more. And so, I can just see everybody lining up, so, you know, who's going to be able to get funded and who's not, and then really truly understanding the consequences, you know? How many people aren't going to be served in this effort of trying to, you know, as we talked earlier, I talked about the great effort that we're trying to do to get people enrolled and serve the folks that don't have the means to, you know, pay for provision. And so, it just, it's nice to know what the worst-case scenario is. And so, you know, at some point, if you, if you hear what that might be or that, it'd be great if you could just communicate that to us and via email, I think.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I would just say that this really highlights the importance of the investments that we're making today, and that those investments that we're, in terms of the money that we've got to make investments, they have to be smart investments. Our management team had a long discussion about that yesterday, in fact. Investments in things such as the two community health centers over the last two years that we've made, those are the kind of investments that's going to be long-term and very productive in making sure that services continue to go to members of our community.
And I know that there's other areas that can be worked on. I had a really good conversation with somebody that's in the healthcare provision a couple days ago, and, you know, the challenge is, is really trying to be able to control the costs and reduce the costs, and there's so many drivers that drive the cost, whether it's, you know, lack of competition or seeing some changes in, you know, who's able to provide the service. Insurance-wise, we're also seeing, you know, pharmaceuticals that are pretty high and expensive. So, I see it's probably going to be a balancing of trying to adjust plans, adjust, try to find ways to reduce costs, and that would probably in the end help reduce some of the need, I assume.
Commissioner Stewart, if I could just add to what Terry said, I think from the beginning of this endeavor, when we talked about the triple aim, there's been a sense of urgency. And I, and this piece, we knew that the initial grant from the federal government to help make those investments was time-limited. And I do have faith that the state will figure out some of those gaps, absolutely. And I think what we can do in the local communities is figure out how to contain those costs. And the sense of urgency that began with Governor Kitzabur, I think, continues, that we have to figure it out. We can't wait. As Terry said, we need to make investments that matter at this point, and we'll begin to see those payoffs. And that saves money, not only in the Health Authority, but in those same education and other budgets, as we're successful at transforming our delivery systems and getting closer to that triple aim, then all of, all of those boats rise as well.
If I might, just one final question. So, if I understand, 3.4% in the total projected expenditures, and so, you're mandated to stay within that as the maximum increase, and I try to put myself as a commissioner and trying to mandate that the county stay within a 3 or 3.4, it's impossible for us. So, I'm kind of curious, is, are you going to explain that just a little bit more to me about how you're going to keep the expenditures without, I assume, without trying to impact the bottom-line service delivery?
Commissioner, that's a very difficult task, but we've actually been, done well so far, two years into this. But the challenge gets greater. The bigger challenge, and that's what the transformation is all about. It's always, this is what the work that we've been doing in this community for the last two and a half years is really all about. But the challenge is growing because there are huge new technology things that are being introduced in the healthcare system. For example, the new medications for hepatitis C, the cost of that is staggering. And then, there are other blockbuster drugs that are coming out, for example, other technologies. And trying to deal with those technologies may be our greatest challenge.
And if I might just say finally, I want to thank you for the great work. And, you know, I've been a believer that, you know, Lane County's kind of been the leader in what Trillium's effort in taking out the charge to move this forward. And there's a lot of rewards, you know, 90,000 people in the program and that. So, I, my questions, I don't want them to be, you know, anything other than trying to understand the system and the challenges ahead.
Certainly, that's right.
You're doing a great job, and I thank you for that.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much, and thank you to both of you for being here today. This is very educational for us, and I hope that we're able to continue to learn more to try to make the delivery of healthcare services to the public as efficient as we can, given all of the state and federal laws and also the costs of the whole system. I guess I have a couple of questions, and the first deals with, from either of your perspectives, I know you've probably both been involved in this, is the transfer of ownership from Aggett to Centene? And what the effect of that transfer, if any, has had on or will have on healthcare delivery? And I'll just say that at the summer meeting of the Association of Oregon Counties, there was a discussion of the trend of transferring these programs or these coordinated care organizations from a kind of community level to a corporate and multi-state corporate level. So, I hope I've asked that question as gently as possible to ask whether you think that that transfer from Aggett to Centene is going to be a good thing, a bad thing, we don't-know thing, a legal thing that you did not participate in? I don't really know, no, the answer to the question, but I'm just curious, from both your perspectives, on the, on the transfer issue. Because that occurred this year, right?
Yes. Yes, sir. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, it's okay to ask it in a not gentle way because I am accustomed to that question in a not gentle way.
Okay.
So, in terms of how it impacts the healthcare in this community, so far, we closed on this acquisition on September the first of this year, and has, thus far, has had no impact. But we project that it will have an improved impact, not a decrease in impact on the community. Number one, we will, over the next year to two years, we will be able to get access to resources that we would have taken years to build or never have acquired. For example, Centene owns their own pharmacy benefit company and their own specialty pharmacy company. And with 4 million lives under management, they have a much stronger position to negotiate for hepatitis C drugs than the state of Oregon does. I mean, that's, that's one example. The IT capabilities are generations ahead of what we have. And if you're going to reach, if you're going to reach the triple aim through care management, you need technology that we simply don't have. Frankly, I don't know of anyone in the state who has the kind of technology they have at coordinating care. And lastly, this is a community-based organization, a community-based CCO. It will remain a community-based. It's not run from St. Louis. It's run from your local Board of Directors, who are still in place and who are still working. So, our contract with the state requires certain performance, certain performance data, excuse me, and we intend to meet all of those contract terms as we have in the past. That doesn't change. So...
And what about from your perspective, sir, from the state perspective?
Sure, I think that Terry did a nice job describing that. You know, we, and my team specifically, are looking no less than quarterly at all 16 CCOs. So, our vantage point is not just to Trillium, but to all of them. And as you may know, there are various corporate forms. Some are non-profits, some are for-profit. One regulated by the, by DCBS as a licensed insurer. And then, of course, we have transaction that has recently occurred. And basically, you know, we are looking at the financial solvency, we're looking at the operating performance, we're assessing constantly the CCO's ability to serve the population to the metrics that we have put forth, and then to be fiscally responsible. So, looking at things like, you know, the relative range of margin to cash flow, looking at reserves, required reserves, making sure that the CCO can sustain itself to its scope. So, this transaction certainly was well-vetted, mostly from a legal standpoint. From a financial standpoint, you know, as long as the contract is in place and being adhered to, including all of its, all of its dimensions, including the need to have public, excuse me, you know, the community leadership and community direction for CCOs, it's a big deal in the contract. So, we look at this as being an example of a new model, perhaps. You know, it's a little bit different, and I think that, can't speak for the people who stood up the CCOs, or what Lynn Saxton calls Transformation 1.0, wasn't here, but it sure seems to be that, you know, with 16 CCOs, you have a variety of operating models and community approaches to help transformation. And the idea is to find out what's the best one, what fits the best for which community, for which region, and across the state. So, this is, this is going to be an interesting adventure for us to watch and see how the advantages that he pointed out, wouldn't I agree with those, and see how they translate now to maybe some advantages to how Trillium can deliver service.
Okay. And now, I understand that because of, and this is kind of a big-picture policy issue to connect mental health and the public's, and public policy implications of connecting mental health to the physical health system, healthcare system, that the CCO, Trillium, will be under this continued relationship with the different types of providers, including Lane County's FQHC, the federally qualified health clinics that we operate under the generic name, I think, Community Health Centers of Lane County. Do you, either of you anticipate any decline in the payments that our FQHC will be getting in the future? In other words, will we be able to continue to operate our FQHC under the assumptions that you're making about, you know, the future? And I know that, you know, most of us in government are attuned to things like federal and state legislative appropriations. But I just want to know whether we're going to be sitting here in our budget meeting next April and be told that the payments we're getting from CCO, from Trillium, the payments we're getting are insufficient to operate our clinics, and somebody's got to do something, and the public usually points to us, as how are we going to balance that budget? So, I'm just curious whether you think that there'll be anything on the horizon that will, federal or state, that will, I realize, you know, we've had, what, 50 votes to repeal Obamacare in the House of Representatives? Okay. Now, those votes have not resulted in a bill that the Senate has considered. They haven't resulted in the president vetoing any of those bills. And we're, you know, we're, what, 14 months away from swearing in a new president? So, a lot can change. I get that, but I'm just looking into a crystal ball here and going, okay, we're, are we able to tell our constituents that the time and effort that we've put into getting this federally qualified healthcare system put together that's providing primary healthcare as well as the money that comes in for mental health through CCO, will we continue to get that, or will there be cutbacks? And particularly, if you drive up the reserve amounts, you know, if you, if you have to move those reserve amounts up for business purposes, for legitimate business purposes, not because there's some evil person out there that says, no, we don't want to give you as much money, but because you've had to drive up reserve... but because you've had to drive up reserve, will we get less money, and therefore have to cut service? What do you think?
Commissioner Sorenson, that's a very legitimate question. I do not foresee that happening. There are, of course, unforeseen things that could come up, such as the worst-case scenario in our, and funding is being reduced. We have to pay within the funding levels that we get from the state and from the federal government, that will not change. But again, I don't foresee that happening. In terms of the reserves, we have already met the reserve requirements of the Insurance Division. Trillium is, I believe, the only CCO that's operating under the regulatory authority of the Insurance Division, and we have a much higher rate of reserves as required versus other CCOs, but we've met those. As the plan grows, as in last year and the year before last, those reserve requirements also grow, so there's always a stretch to reach those. I don't, again, I don't see that, at the moment, impacting payment rates, but, you know, it's hard to predict five years from now, in terms of what the funding of the program will be, so there's always that wild card. Even so, we have got to get costs down. I mean, you see the numbers. We've got to figure out how to get costs down, but there's just no way that we're going to invest $2 million in the county clinics, and then trash them by not funding them enough to survive. So, we're going to do everything we can to make sure those clinics are successful, not failures.
Commissioner Lichten?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Here, I thought our Oregon was going to solve all of our budget woes in the next election, so I, potential ballot measure, so we don't have anything to worry about, I don't think, isn't that correct? So, of course, make Clark County Washington--
No comment, Commissioner.
--make Clark County, Washington, the fastest-growing county in the Northwest, you know, continue to do that, but other than that. Terry, I want to say thank you very much for being here. I actually, I suggested to, and I'm glad the board asked, also asked to have you come here, and just make sure that we're all comfortable with the, from the Agate to the Centene, because I think that's important. And just to give you a little bit about my background, this is something I don't share a lot, but my grandfather, along with some other prominent lumbermen down in Roseburg, formed a hospital called Douglas Community Hospital. And so, as you know, that went through a horrible situation where it's now closed. And with Columbia HCA, then the big personality Texans from Triad, and I got to tell you, I heard that, we heard the same thing, but that local board's going to remain to have total control, you have nothing to worry about, and now it's been closed for about 15 years now. And so, Mercy Medical is now the only hospital provider down in Douglas County. Of course, I think with Peace Health and being a regional hospital, obviously helps out with that as well. So, I, just, but here's my thought on this as well, just talking to various folks who are in the business with Agate, Centene, I mean, I personally, I'm absolutely confident that the transition's going to continue to be very smooth. At the same time, it just allows me just to continue to have a little bit of that oversight, understanding, because when the board at Douglas Community decided to move forward with the Columbia HCA deal, I knew many of those board members personally, and they are very smart, good business people, and I think at the end, they really felt like they were making the right decision to move forward on that, not knowing what was coming. And it's through the federal investigation, and then obviously Columbia HCA dissolving, and then Triad, and now there's no more Triad. So, I mean, it's, so, it's, it just, and so I just, I think having you come here and just continue just to bolster that confidence is extremely helpful, and I want to say thank you very much. I appreciate you doing so. I think how you answered, Commissioner Sorenson, I'm not going to ask you to comment, or if you feel, unless you feel like you wanted to address maybe a little bit more on this, but I think how you answered Commissioner Sorenson's first question, I'm satisfied with as well. But just on that experience and background that I have, it's out there, but I know that these are two completely different organizations, and so I appreciate that.
Yes, Commissioner, also, as a point of interest, Mercy Hospital is owned by CHI, which is a Colorado-based company, so it's owned by a large--
Nope, in fact, Peace Health almost put a deal together with CHA--
That's right, that's exactly right.
--about two years ago, I think, so I'm well aware of them as well.
Okay, and the other point I'd like to make, I don't want you to think that I'm representative, that they're representing, that there is nothing to worry about, the future is too unknown for me to say that. So, at your request, I will be here whenever you wish, to give you an honest upfront answers to where I think we are with things, but you have a group of people in this community that's working to make this the best healthcare system in the state.
Well, and I'm sure our questions would have been much nicer than probably what you've been hearing from other folks who have really had strong interests as well, and but again, I can't thank you enough--
Yes, sir.
--for taking your time out to be here, and I think just keeping us at ease as much as anything, understanding our partnership with you, and with the CCO, and our clinics are, in fact, we're very thrilled to be having, you know, with our grand opening of our new clinic coming onboard as well. So, thank you very much, and thank you, Oregon Health Authority, as well, and your work, and we look forward to working with you in the near and long future, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Fairbanks, thank you for being here today--
Chair.
--for being, and just being a backup and answering questions that perhaps Mr. Copeland could answer, but hearing them from you gives us an additional measure of confidence that the answers are coming straightforward and covering all the bases. And Rhonda, good to see you, by the way, how are you doing? Commissioner Sorenson and Commissioner Stewart asked some of the hard questions that are being asked around the community, and one response that you had, Mr. Fairchild, that I was really curious to hear a little bit more about, you said you monitor the performance of each of the 16 CCOs at least quarterly? Could you talk about that just a little bit? What is the OHH's role in making sure that all 16 CCOs are performing to the required standards?
Sure. Chairman and Commissioner Farr, and the rest of the commissioners, yeah, what we are doing is, by our contract with each CCO, we have a set of financial metrics that are required. There is an audit, an annual audit of the entity required. Those, that financial data is prescribed on a set of forms. We gather those forms for each of the CCOs every quarter, we post those to the Internet, so they are public documents, they're available for all of them, so you are able to see, you know, financial position, operations, and then key financial metrics, liquidity ratios, particularly, that we gather for each, so that's--
And there are metrics that are common to all 16 CCOs--
Yes.
--and actually compare the 16 CCOs and see where one's outperforming others, or--
Correct. Another key metric is going to be your MLR, right?
And those are public documents, anybody can look at them at the time they want.
Mm-hmm, anybody can see them, that's right.
Okay, and that's an annual audit, but also a quarterly monitoring?
Right. Quarterly review, published, posted, and then we require each one to be audited.
Excellent, that's good to know, I wasn't fully aware of that.
Right.
And Mr. Copeland, you talked about paying within the funding provided by state and federal, by the actual money that comes in, can you talk about that a little bit? Are all 16 CCOs required to pay within the money that's given to them?
Well, I guess required may not be the best word, but prudent financial management dictates that one doesn't exceed what your income is, and so--
You're like calories, aren't you, right?
I would say that all 16 CCOs had better be paying within the funding rate, or they will be in financial trouble in very short order.
And is that one of the metrics, is that, as far as the audit is concerned, is that the money in, the money out?
Well, certainly, you know, profitability, as I said, and then cash flow, right, the deployment of cash and the free cash flow that's available to fund operations, that's a key viewpoint that we bring to bear. Happily, I can tell you that all 16 CCOs have got a very proactive, in every way proactive organization. Everyone that I've met is hugely invested in community leadership, in trying to improve health. And so, in terms of the, as Terry said, you know, there's a very robust rate development process for payment rates, it's very, it's actuarial sound, it's based on, and you can go into, probably speak to this from your vantage point, Terry, but it's very robust, and all factors are considered, emerging trends are considered, comparisons across the state within regions, and CCOs specifically are considered, so there's a great deal of rigor. I mean, Oregon Health Authority is very, very data-driven, and since my time, and since Lynn joined in January, and I came in May, we've gone through a major reorganization. A lot of my effort and my team is focused on creating efficiency within the agency to be able to better serve, and to be able to be more effective for assisting transformation. And just an observation that I've made from being in central Oregon, working, when we really didn't, no one had heard of an Affordable Care Act yet, it was coming, or ACAs or CCOs for that matter, I can tell you that this is hard work, this is no less than courageous work, and we're going to be successful because of the work of the CCOs. We're going to be successful because of the people who deliver the care, and the innovation needs to come from care delivery. And it's going to involve other state agencies that impact the social determinants of health, not just medical care. And remember, I guess you know Governor Kitzheimer used to talk about this, but I'm fond of pointing out that we're now no longer a sick care system, or a healthcare system. And population health, and improving, over time, the condition of our population of Oregonians to be healthier is not a light switch. And so, we've grabbed the rheostat, we're turning it, we're measuring it, we're developing it, and we're trying to innovate it, and it does really take everybody. So, we've got a lot of work to do, but we've also got a lot of success to point to. I tell you, in my two years outside of the state in consulting, I spent a lot of time, as I say, Arizona, Texas, Michigan, Georgia, a little bit of work in Pennsylvania, Tennessee, Oregon is really doing some very special things. So, my personal belief, and the reason why I'm back here, is to pick it up and to see it through, because it does take a huge amount of effort, but it also, it takes a lot of estate to it, and a lot of courage, in my opinion.
And, you know, through my work on the Association of Oregon Counties Health Steering Committee, and on the National Association of Counties Health Steering Committee, I hear more and more all the time how innovative Oregon has been, and how we really are ahead of the curve in terms of providing healthcare, not sick care, but healthcare, exactly as you stated, and the fact that someplace, depending on whose numbers you look at, someplace around 94% of all Oregonians are under a health plan now, is pretty remarkable what we are doing, and it's pretty remarkable how we in Lane County are really adjusting to it by opening the new Delta Oaks federally-qualified health center coming up, and a second one, another one opened up a little more than a year ago. And Mr. Copeland, Commissioner Stewart was talking about the gap in numbers in the out years, 2017, 19, and the 1.4 million draw on federal funds, and we can, you said that so many people are interested in this, there'll be a lot of attention focused on that. I agree, and I anticipate that, and the half a billion in state funds required to balance the budget. One thing that you are looking at is a very conservative number as far as the general fund dollars being provided for, for the plan, and, you know, if the general fund does increase by 5% per year, that'll be some, if we presume that it's going to be the same amount, the same percentage amount devoted to the plan, some of it will be offset by that. But really, I want to talk a little bit about the federally-qualified health centers that we operate here, and how the capital improvements that we're placing into our healthcare system in Lane County are providing us with a more efficient, more cost-effective way to provide the services. So, as we move down the road, by having, for instance, behavioral health and physical health under the same roof, the money that we save by combining those services in the same facility are certainly going to help us offset some of the gaps in the future. So, not only are we looking at a more focus on making certain the revenue stream is flowing, but we're also looking at making certain that when we spend the money, we're spending it more efficiently, more people are getting served in a more efficient manner, and by and large, at the end of the day, we have more Lane County residents who are getting a better level of healthcare than they've ever had before, and that's what we're seeing. And when Delta Oaks began service yesterday, we'll have a chance to actually go out there and take a look at it later on in this month, and it's just an example of how we are putting money into our capital system, the improvements in the facilities upfront, and helping us to provide more efficient care down the road. Thank you very much, once again, for being here, Mr. Fairchild, it was a--
Thanks for having me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fairbanks.
Sorry.
It was wonderful listening to you talk, and I mentioned earlier to you, Ken, that I could hear, listen to you guys talk for hours, I could listen to you guys talk for hours too, thank you.
So, I want to take a few minutes here to talk about what you handed out, and first I want to ask Commissioner Sorenson if he can take one off the top and pass the extras to our administrator. This will end up on our website later today.
And this says draft, pardon me, at some point it'll become non-draft, or is it close to?
Mr. Chair, just again, to make sure that this is not a legislative-approved budget--
I understand that, but board materials--
Yes, sir.
--if they're handed to the board, they're public record, and they end up on our website.
I understand that.
So, you know, I want to make sure, I want to make sure that a clean copy got to our folks, so they can get it.
And I would speak to the, Commissioner, if I may, Mr. Chair. Yes, we, this is a draft, and it probably always will be.
Okay.
That's its nature, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, until they're actually voting on the budget for the next biennium, it'll be a draft.
Right, and it's called something else.
And then they'll probably have to deal with it again in the next short session. I want to understand the line that says, "Draw on federal funds match" in the upcoming bi-, two bienniums there. Is that an anticipation that we, you know, that you see the federal funds gradually decrease under the federal funds line, is there an anticipation that we will get that as additional money, that's what's needed to balance the budget for those bienniums, that we get that additional money from the federal government, and that's not outlined in the current Affordable Care Act? Or, I'm trying to understand--
Yeah, this forecast, Mr. Chair, really just takes the published, and the, if you noticed the footnote on each of the assumptions under each of the bienniums, you talk about the, what's called the FMAP, which is the match rate, on, you'll see non-ACA stays pretty much the same, but you see that the ACA match decreases in biennium 17, 19, and then into 19, 21. And so, we have not anticipated that there'll be any additional federal funds, hence, we're driving to what the gap, sort of the net gap is, and the baseline assumption is, if short of any other source, then the state would have to make up that gap. So, we're looking at it from two dimensions, though, I want to be clear here, that, first of all, what are the things we can do to mitigate and to reduce the gap, and we talked about those things. One of those things is absolutely going to be the waiver for 17, 19, which is going to the federal government and talking about transformation funding, talking about the DISHB funds that are noted here that are now sunset, but is there a mechanism, we don't know, but is there a mechanism for the federal government to continue to help us, because again, it's not a light switch, it's a rheostat, and if we show results, and we show what we're doing with transformation, and we're moving the needle, and with our CCOs, we are staying within sustainability on a statewide level, you know, in the aggregate, we're staying within 3.4%, you know, is there an opportunity to continue to get transformation funding? Can't speak that that will happen, but that certainly is part of the, part of the plan.
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this point. I was looking at the big scary numbers of about a half a billion dollars in the next biennium, and-- biennium and 1.7 approximately in the following biennium that says, you know, state funds required to balance. But if we don't get additional federal funding, we're actually looking at about 1.9 billion in the next biennium? And then?
No, 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 no. We were still forecasting, you know, just shy of 500. These are the federal funds according to what we believe to be, I guess you could say yes. I mean, I suppose if the federal government were to make a dramatic change to the funding levels to the state, then we would have a different picture.
But let me just ask, the assumptions in here are based on the current rates in the law?
Yes.
So there would have to be a change in those current rates to get that 1.4 billion from the federal government?
That's right.
So there's a 1.425?
1.425. That match is a function of the number in the federal funds of 9.927. So as the current law and as the current requirements work, our contract with the federal government, this, I guess I would characterize that as being our baseline. And we're fairly confident that conservatively, that's what we can, we can project. And therefore, with other factors, would cause us to be about 497 million short in the next biennium, if everything else stays the same.
Still confused, but it's, how many pages was that law? So that 1.425 is based for, on a formula of the 94% federal allocation of the 9.927? And it's an automatic thing that we'll get that 1.425 as state will?
It is, you know, I'm going to hedge a little bit because I'm a little bit new to this, but the automatic, I don't know that, there's many things that are automatic except, until we have the new waiver in place. But yes, according to the way that these relationships work today, that that would be the expected match from the federal government on the 9.9 plus any other state.
So our actual federal funding of this program is showing that it's actually going to increase in the next biennium by almost 20%, well, 15% approximately. And then in the following biennium, it may also increase, even though our, because of the match portion of it?
Because of the match.
Projected against the whole issue of where they are with the federal budget right now.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add some confusion to this. To state it another way, that 1.4 billion in the 2017 to 19 biennium is the estimate of what the state economist, based on the current law, projects that we will receive from the federal government. So.
So I just have to worry about the 500 million?
That's, that's, that's the point.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm only worrying a little bit.
Yeah, just a little bit.
I just, you know, and you talk about that you're only counting on, you're not showing the 5% growth. Well, 5% growth of the 1.217 billion, that's the state general fund allocation, is only 60 million. That doesn't close a $500 million gap by any stretch of the means. And, you know, you look at what the waiver was, the, you know, the previous biennium, it's only 136 million. That, so even with, so you're up to maybe 200 of the 500 million gap. You know, 300 million is a significant portion of the state budget in the next biennium. You know, I'm looking at, you know, we had to beg, twist arms, and whatever, just to get 30 million allocated for our justice reinvestment grant program, which was half of what they had promised us in the previous biennium. You know, I can just see, you know, what else is going to go away? And what other demands are there coming up? And we just had our local mayor send, and council send a note up to the governor wanting, you know, an emergency declared around housing and to provide funds for that. I just don't, it's pretty scary what we're looking at in the next biennium. And then you look the following biennium, I don't know where we close the 1.7 billion dollar gap. You know, I had a few other things to note. We're already about 25 minutes past the estimated time for this agenda item, so I really appreciate your patience. And I really, I want to just say, I really appreciate the folks from OHA coming down here. That's, was really nice to have. But, you know, I'm a little concerned because I have some questions about the growth, the patient growth rate you're assuming. I have friends that have been recently unemployed, and they're starting to get notices about being penalized because they no longer have healthcare coverage. And of course, next year, everyone's got to file a 1095 with the IRS to prove they have healthcare coverage. And I think that that growth rate will change based on that. You know, as people start seeing the personal penalties are increasing for not having coverage, you know, it started out rather mild, and it's progressive, you're going to see a lot of people that have been avoiding, you know, taking, you know, getting their coverage, jumping into the ACA system, and it's not going to be just population growth. It's going to be population growth plus the folks that have avoided, as the penalties get higher and higher. So I'm not so sure the total people that are on the system is not going to just be population background growth. It's going to be actually higher over the next couple of years, and then it'll probably level off once that surge happens. I'm kind of curious, have you seen, since we've, and at least in Lain County, a change in ER usage since we've gone to a coordinated care system? Because that was the whole promise, was we were going to take people out of the ERs and treat them at a lower cost level.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we, first of all, we had on the legacy population significant impact on ER utilization, but as this new group of people came in, about 20,000 or so, and we've been struggling to get access for them for primary care, so we've seen an increase in that particular population in the ER. But these were people who were not getting any kind of care in the past. And so we've had an impact on the folks we knew, and now we're working on those new folks that are coming in. So this does have an impact, a positive impact on ED use. And if I may, Mr. Chair, apprehension is the appropriate response to this. So we're not, we're not here to try to make you feel better or to paint a rosy picture. We're here to throw some cold, hard water on what the facts are, the things that we're facing over the next six years.
Thank you. So we've got about two minutes before our time, certain exec session. I know Commissioner Stewart had more questions, so maybe he can send an email or something like that.
Yep, I can. I'll probably forward them to Karen and get the answers. But I think for me, a couple of the places that I'm hearing is just providers that are a little anxious about the changes. I really appreciate, Mark, you talked about, and was drilled down a little bit harder by Commissioner Farr, was the monitoring and the controls and setting the programs and how that goes. And it's good to hear. I think Terry addressed the fact that still going to be maintaining a local board and local, local community presence. They're just, you know, they had a really great relationship with us when we were in Lain Care. Close, got a little bit further separated when Trillium, it's not quite as tight and close. And now they're concerned, is it going to get worse with the, with the staff? So I just wanted to share that with you in hopes that you keep that in mind. You know, it's just as simple as changing billing practices and, you know, how's that going to impact somebody that's running on a tight budget and used to the current billing? And maybe it's going to tweak a little bit. So there's just, you know, communication, I think is probably the key in having an open door and being able to communicate concerns.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for coming. We've got to move on in our agenda. I really appreciate your time. So I'm going to jump on down to our exec session, and we'll have to do county council announcements and commissioners' business after the end of our afternoon agenda. And the Board of Commissioners will meet in executive session to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. This executive session will be held pursuant to ORS 1926602H, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in the executive session, and we will be coming back in a regular session at 1:30 this afternoon. So we are now recessed into executive session. And for everybody, remember, that's in the county administration conference room.